All right, good evening, everyone. It's 7:05. Sorry, we're starting a little bit late with the call and getting to the order. I have basically three items on the agenda for this evening. The order will be, first, on the new matters, 2016-15, Jeffrey Luke and Amy Ziff, Five Sterns Ridge. Number two will be 2016-07, Leslie Accolay, Revocable Living Trust, Seventeen Meadowway. And the third item will be 2016-05, Denardo Capital Corp., Thirty-Forty South Broadway. Is everybody up to date, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. I think, you know, we received minutes for March, April, and May, and I'm sorry, I have not had a chance to take a look at them, but perhaps if we all can take a look before next meeting, and we're trying to prove it. Next meeting, okay? All righty. So the first item on the agenda is 2016-15, Jeffrey Luke and Amy Ziff, Five Sterns Ridge.
Pat Steinsteiner from Gotham Design and Community Development here representing Luke Ziff. They are the owners of Lot Three, which is Five Sterns Ridge, a fact behind the high school. He may remember this house from years ago when we got all the other approvals. The Ziff's purchased the house several years ago. Since that time, they've done some landscaping. They've made a couple of changes, and they want to add a stair coming down from their deck to the backyards, and they want to extend the existing fences so that they can enclose the backyard.
You mean wood fence?
The wood fence. Extend the existing wood fence up further and then return it to the house on this side, and it comes up here and return it over to the house so they can put a dog in the backyard. They'll do the wood fence with the same way that we did this, which has the wire mesh in it so that the dog can't get out. Obviously, the deck and stairs is the primary issue here, although there's other concerns. That increases our site coverage over what the allowable is, so I'm anticipating that we will be going to the ZBA to get a variance, I think it's a 2.5% increase over what we have now, and 2.4% over what's permitted. The last year, I think it was, there was landscaping redone in this section of the yard. There was an existing stone retaining wall that's on the property, actually comes up and crosses over the property line, but that was built before, and that's the CFO for both properties. And I've got the surveys here of the as-built for that in case there are questions. An additional wall was built coming around here. It's basically two rocks high, and it was to level this area of the yard out, create two steps, so there's a relatively level area here for a garden, and a more level area here for grass, which eliminated the flurp from here down to this wall. As I say, that was done a year ago. I don't think there's anything actually else to this. We have Doug's comments from Hunt Engineering. We understand those, and we know what we need to do. And I think at this point, if we could get on the agenda for the ZBA, since you get into the whole summer schedule thing, it would be great.
Any comments from any of the board members?
Yes. And the stone wall, did they need approval a year ago?
That they're here to legalize the stone wall. That one's stolen.
Okay. And in the letter to the homeowners, you say something about regrading two-foot walls?
I'm basically referring to the work that's already been done.
You fixed them up, two-foot walls?
Um, we actually, that's what they are right now. We're not going to do any change to it unless the board says.
How come the cross-section over there says maximum of 11 feet, far right?
That is, this detail?
Yeah.
That's a detail that we've been advised to remove from the drawing, and we're going to heed that advice.
Well, you show, you say two feet, then you show a cross-section of 11 feet.
That was.
You're trying to confuse us.
That was.
You succeeded.
I'm not sure I did. That was the detail that we've had on the drawing from the beginning, which, of course, handled the construction of this retaining wall.
I'm going to get John Daddio back from Puerto Rico.
He comes back. He's probably.
He's got to be over 90 by now.
I think he's younger than I am.
No. No way.
Really?
He was old when I started.
Well, John's one of those people that never seems to get any older. He, maybe not once a month, maybe once every six weeks. So he comes up and goes over, and he's got, you know, email and fax and all that, so. But I don't think the wall that we're talking about has any of those concerns. It literally is two rocks high.
So there's no, there's no wall represented by a cross-section of 11 feet?
Exactly, and that should be removed from the drawing we will, as well as the site development notes. None of those really are pertaining to what we're dealing with.
Any other comments? No? Any comments from anyone in the audience? No? Doug, did you have any comments?
I don't have any comments.
No additional comments? Mary Ann? All right. Okay. Then I guess you're okay to go to the ZBA at this point.
That'd be great.
Oh, wait, you know what? The CP have had a comment on it.
Just noticing any trees that might be in the area.
Yeah, there aren't, but we'll document it. Yeah, we'll make a note to that, and I've got photos here if anybody wants to look at that. I know that there's an over-under on the evening, so I don't want to get involved.
No, that's all right. Okay.
No, that's all right.
Next time.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 2016-07, Accolay Revocable Trust, Seventeen Meadowway.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just ask a second or a minute. Matt, does he have anything else on the gap, Steve Bondes, which was scheduled for item number two on the agenda? Just wanted to know, the church is in a kind of tight deadline to get the project approved during the summer months, at which the church has less attendance in schools out, so we have representatives here from the church, and Mr. Steven Lopez, the landscape architect there, are available tonight to address any comments that you may have regarding application.
Well, the point is, Doug had a series of comments, and we know Lucille Munz had some comments that supposedly Steve Lopez looked at, but we haven't seen a revised plan to address those, and that's the issue. And that's what we want to see. I don't want to take the board's time looking at site plans that aren't final at this point because you've gone to the ZBA, and you've gotten the okay from the ZBA, but there are issues that we still need for the site plan that I want to see done, and I don't want to set a precedent of taking matters up the night of a meeting when it hasn't been presented to us at the proper timeframe.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I just say something on the record? I did speak, I don't know if he's from your front, whether he's still from your front, but I did have a conversation with Lino today because he had asked to be on the agenda, and after consultation with the Pat, the planning board chairperson, because of these things we still needed, we did let him know that it wouldn't be considered tonight, and nothing had been submitted prior to the meeting, so.
Okay, so take it, so just make sure everything gets in before the deadline of the July meeting, and we'll take it up at the July meeting, hopefully we'll get it resolved then.
Just to.
Steve, you have to speak.
I'm sorry. Steve Lopez, landscape architect for the Appicant, and if we have our plans in and everybody's in concurrence at your next meeting, that everything's in order, we can anticipate, hopefully, we can have.
We hope so. All right, okay.
I told the engineer I'd meet with him next week. Go over the items.
Very good.
Okay, sorry.
Dan Asher, the architect, and Mike Stein, our hydraulic engineer. I'm going to start by going back over the wall and the change in the scope of the project. The presentation right now is only pertaining to the front of the property. We separated the two application. We're going to do just the front at this point. The reason is, we're trying to expand the turnaround at the top of the hill, and I'm hoping that the people who came over took a look and realized the hardship that we have into getting in and out of the house at this point. So this is what we are addressing today, is the extension of that parking area in the front on top of the hill to allow us to turn around and be able to come down facing forward, and to keep a couple of cars standing on that area. So that is the wall that we are extending. This is the existing wall that we have now. We are matching the material in terms of the stone and the look and everything about it. Also, we have, the height of it hasn't changed, as we discussed last time, it's going to be around 12 foot at the highest point, and then we have now proposing, and that's what we're discussing today, is the planting that we are proposing to camouflage the look of it from the street and also from the driveway as we go up. So these are the proposed trees. We are proposing mature trees at 10 foot and 12 foot. We have two Norway spruces at 12 feet. We also have a blue spruce, and then three 10-foot spruce, and then three 10-hemlock to totally cover up that area, then also some decorative enderel mida in this area here. I took an actual picture of the wall visible from this. So that would be the wall as we see it right now. It's approaching at the, literally on the property line at the street level. This is the existing wall as we see it, and these are the trees that remain. I'll just go back to one point, is that due to this action, there's only one tree that needs to be, to come down, and that's the only tree that we're requesting to remove as part of this application and due to this action.
Which one is?
It's the black birch that you.
Is it shown on the photograph?
It's basically the one that you, I think it's, yeah.
Is it behind those three trees?
Behind these three trees. These trees remain. They don't go. Behind it, in that areas, I think not as visible from here. So then, the wall is going to come out and come this way, and that's the new proposed wall. It's an actual rendering of the wall as it's going to be with the planting that we're proposing with the height at the time of planting. So this, you can see the wall will not be visible with all the evergreens that we are proposing to plant. And these are actual trees that we imposed to the site, and we did an actual structure of the wall, and after that we put this. This is the visual of what that is going to look like from the street.
The greens are green all year?
Evergreens, yes. Hemlocks and spruces and blue spruce and Norway spruce, they're all evergreen, and they spread out, and they're pretty dense. So, and this is, side to side to show the view was the change, which is, I think, even better than it looks right now, and again, emphasizing the point that this is a real hardship that we're trying to resolve in this application. And after that, I'll leave the rest over. I'd like to address the other points that came up, and we also have the point that we received today around plant engineering, so we're, Michael.
Yes, good evening. Michael Stein, President of Hudson Engineering with Engineers for Project. Just very, just to reiterate, the rear portion of the property was, is basically being limited this time. The owners haven't moved in yet, but one of the priorities they do know is the front parking area. They're looking at, working out with the landscape architect to see, you know, how they may change what they're proposing in the back based upon the comments received from the board. They didn't want to hold up the approvals for the front as they take their time to really evaluate how they want to approach the rear. Again, the wall along this point, its highest point, is approximately 14-foot high. We had submitted drawings for the last application for the wall, and that basically remained unchanged since the last application, so we, or since the last submission, so we hadn't resubmitted them, but we can definitely submit copies again. We also had the wetlands flagged down below. We're still waiting for the, I'm sorry, the surveyor to get us the actual location, or the exact location of where the wetlands are, but it's all in the same relative proximity as the existing group to where the work is taking place. And so as we filed both applications for the wetlands, we submitted the request letter, and we're here to answer any questions.
Did you see Lucille Munz's comments? Because I think one of the comments she made was that, was regarding the hemlocks, as a matter of fact. She said, "The hemlocks are noted for screening to soften the visual impact of the height of the wall. However, hemlocks are subject to disease and should be changed to a disease-resistant plant."
You haven't received that.
Yeah, that must.
I don't know why they don't share that with us.
I mean, the majority of the comments from the last comments we received.
It was dated May 29th, that's what's on.
Sure. The majority of the comments that we had received from Lucille the last time really pertain, do more of the work going on in the rear, so by eliminating that at this point, I think we've addressed a lot of that concern. But we will go through the comments, and we'll address them and revise it accordingly.
Okay. Sorry, I have another comment. So now, this site plan, it does not show any tree removal at the backyard or down the slope at this point?
Correct.
You're only showing the tree removal for the trees that you need to remove for the turnaround parking area.
That's correct.
Which is one tree.
Which is one tree.
One tree, the black birch that indicated on all the plants.
Okay. But now, on your landscape plan, what is it showing on your landscape plan?
It's just that one, one black birch is being removed, that one here, it's already indicated, and these are all the proposed trees that highlighted in colors to see it. That's what we are submitting.
That's the same drawing we did?
I just colored it.
You need to speak into the microphone for the host.
Yes.
Okay. And I think, we were out there too, I made some comments, so I think particularly in the front yard, just past the.
Right along the side.
Yes, yeah.
We were talking about putting some type of grass, like pachysandra.
Some ground cover on there, because you really are not going to get much grass to grow there. You can see it's all moss that's growing there now because of the number of trees you have there, so I think you should look at doing some ground cover in there too, to stabilize it. And then you also had, there was some, there was a little bit of erosion coming off the house in the corner that needed to be addressed too.
And so the two ways we're going to handle that was, one, we're going to be trimming back some of the trees here, removing some of the lower branches so we can get more light into the area. We're along, and in the slope part, we're going to put in pachysandra and try to eliminate the erosion that we're getting.
All right. Any other comments from, any board members?
Where the work is, the new wall and fill is going to happen, it's on the top of the hill, and it's going to come downhill. What are you doing for erosion from the construction site?
Along here, down slope of the wall, that's what's happening, silt fences going in.
You know, silt fences have a habit of failing in the biggest storm. I would think it's such a steep hill that I would put double silt fences.
We can go in with silt fence reinforced with hay bales, just to give it more reinforcement.
It needs to be, because that's a pretty steep hill, there's a stream at the bottom of it, and invariably, if anybody's been on a site, if it rains a little heavy, it'll fail, so you have to have a backup.
That's not a problem.
Especially since it's a big hill and a stream at the bottom of it.
We can make those adjustments.
I would make it a double silt fence, not use hay bales.
Not a problem.
And 19 Meadowway, did they get noticed? I think there was a change in ownership. They're the only ones that could see it.
I'm Leslie, the owner of this situation.
Which situation? Nineteen?
No, seventeen, this one. We did, we spoke with nineteen, and they're lovely, and they submitted a letter that we included with our submission that they understand.
This is the new nineteen?
The new, yeah. Leah and Tal. I believe you have the letter that they signed and submitted.
Yes, not a problem.
Hillary, did you have some comments?
No. I just have a comment on the hemlocks, and I totally agree, you don't, you really don't want them. They get willy-ajlid, and they get ugly very fast. And you wind up removing them, so don't put them in in the first place.
Any comments from anyone in the audience? No? I think then you can go to the ZBA with this, because right there, over on coverage.
With the legalization of the patio, just along with those steps.
Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of over.
So we, we're not adding any footage with this situation whatsoever.
You respond documented.
I think we inherited that situation.
Yes, yes, they're yours. You're over the coverage, so.
I think we're not over the coverage, was my understanding, in that because we're not adding any footage, there wouldn't be any additional issue.
You're making the turnaround bigger, so that's.
But it's driveway, right?
The wheel counts.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, at the same time as this application for the driveway is being done, you're also legalizing undocumented coverage. Otherwise, you can't issue a permit if you have an open violation.
Okay.
So this is going to be.
So the fact that we inherited this is just our bad luck.
You can take it up with the person that sold it to you. You can take it up with the person.
But then, when we got the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah. I can sit down, I can show you the three permits that were issued, and I can show you where the patios are not. And I'll hand it to Mike before he leaves.
Okay.
So the ZBA, and then come back for flying, which will be in July, and then what you should do too with that, I noticed this is the same landscape plan that you presented before, but that landscape plan should be at the same scale as the site plan, so it's easier to, I believe one is at a 10 scale, and one's at a 20 scale.
Yeah, this is slightly.
Right, well, they should be, all the plans should be at the same scale so that we can compare.
Not a problem. We'll take care of it.
Okay? All right.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to put a difference of the planting on the.
Right, well then, take a look.
Here, what's actually right around this.
Okay.
Would you like us?
Take a look at Lucille Munz's letter, and then you should get that plan back in at the right scale, and we'll get it to Lucille and let her see if there are any comments on that, or you can get in touch with her directly once you.
So we need to go with this application for the ZBA to legalize.
Right, right, to legalize the over.
Might well be able to cap those. I'll just move to that.
All right.
Okay.
So, Phil, there were comments in the ECB for going to property.
Did you want to address them?
So, so then.
You're going to have to come up and take the microphone.
Where's the microphone?
I'll take this.
Come stand.
Andrew Wilson, Endowment Conservation Board Representative. Now, so as I understand it, tonight, the application's been split into two parts. The lawn part is not being addressed tonight, right now.
At the back of it, right, that's.
Okay, so it's just the driveway?
It's just the driveway.
When we were reading it, it said, "The application for wetlands, water bodies, and water course permits are conclusory. The statement that there are no wetland nutrients should be impacted appears to ignore the impact of lawn fertilizers as a result of the substantial increase in lawn areas." Now, so that's in the back, so that's not on agenda for tonight.
Is there some feedback?
Yes.
Sorry. There's no service in here, how can there be feedback?
You got to keep the following.
Do you want, can you give this to Mark, so she can not use?
My paper, this doesn't always work.
No.
Okay, so I have, so basically, we have to rethink this because the lawn's not in play. However, I just do want to historically state that this site does have erosion control problems, and when the original construction occurred, there was a heavy downpour, and there was, there was sediment on Meadowway that actually was in violation, so great care needs to be given to this property and the steep slope and the potential violation.
That's right, we recommended two.
Yeah.
What's the distance that should be between them? 10 feet?
Five, 10 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we'll see you next month. We'll wrap it up. The next item is 2016-05, Denardo Capital Corp. I'm moving the mic, sorry, I have to set up over here.
Get a permit for that?
For this, or for all the equipment that we've got?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Cooper from Law &amp; Design, and I'm here representing the Denardos. We're here on our continuing site plan and subdivision application for the development of a 27-unit attached single-family development at 30 South Broadway. Last meeting, we settled upon the revised layout of the development. We are still in the process of updating plans and revising some of the reports for your board, landscaping, stormwater, et cetera, but we do have some items that your board has requested, and rather than skip a meeting, we thought you guys are going to miss us, so we might as well come and hit those pieces, so. We do, you know, we, tonight, we are going to go through the visual analysis. We requested some extra view shed points coming north on Broadway, as well as a request about a clarification from the video that was presented, I think, back in September 2015, in connection with sort of the massing and layout study that the village board was undertaking in connection with the request for a zoning amendment. And then we also have our responses to the AKRF traffic memo, and Rich Pearson is here tonight to answer any questions. Why don't I do this, I'll turn it over to Mr. Scutcheon to take you through the visual analysis, the new visual analyses, and then the video, answer the question with the video. Glenn Gervini is also here tonight, our architect, to answer some questions about how the design has evolved since the video way back when. And then finally, what we would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is request that the board at least schedule the public hearing to open in July, one, because we'd like to get the notices out, we can obviously keep it open, but want to make sure that we're not stuck for an August hearing, you know, at least opening it then, so.
Okay.
Without further ado, I'll sit to James Lee.
Can we turn the lights on again? I worked for the board last night.
No, it's Joe, is that? I'll see who's with him. It's on the outside.
Want them all in, yes.
All right, thank you. My name's Anthony Guchioni, I'm associate principal with the firm JMC, and this is the current site plan, this is the one that seemed to be preferred at the last meeting last month with the planning board. One change we made to the plan was right here, we added those six perpendicular visitor spaces. And that gives us a total of nine visitor spaces where we had six previously.
Can you sit down, please?
Sure.
Anthony, is this rolling?
It's good.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, I'd like to take you through some more visual analysis. One of the requests of the board is that we looked at some more visual analysis further down South Broadway, south, but up the hill. The last meeting, we went through locations one through five that you'll recall. I'd like to take you now through location six, seven, and eight that take you further up to the crest. This is at the top, this is location number six, that most southerly dot that you saw on that plan. Here, this was taken off of Google Street View, this photo, because that was where we could find a winter picture that didn't have leaves on the trees.
Can you move a little bit to the right because the thermostat is blocking.
That's part of the project.
It is, it looks part of the project.
Okay. So, looking northbound on South Broadway, here you can see a little bit of the McCon Stern House, and here you can see a little bit of the Fee Building. This is the existing condition for this photo. Going to take you now to the proposed condition. Again, the McCon Stern House, and you see a little bit of the one duplex right there, that's the duplex closest to South Broadway. You really don't see any of the other buildings on the site because of the tree trunks and the vegetation in the way there. Now we're coming to location number seven, which is a little further north on South Broadway. Again, the McCon Stern House, this is existing conditions, and you see the Fee Building a little more clearly through the trees there. Now we're going to go to proposed, it's pretty similar to what you saw with the Fee Building. It's in the same alignment. That is the duplex, again, closest to South Broadway, and the other one, you don't really see through the woods, but there's some evergreen vegetation and a lot of vegetation blocking the duplex on the south side of the property closer to the aqueduct. And now we come down the hill, this is just a little bit south of the previous study that we did. Again, the McCon Stern House through the vegetation, this is actually a picture that we took a couple of months ago that we had. And then here is the Fee Building under existing conditions through the vegetation, and then proposed again, you can just see a little bit of the one duplex through the vegetation. This one has the buds just starting on the trees, so you could see that if it was a summer view, you really wouldn't see anything. So those are the additional three visuals we did in addition to the five we had showed you previously. Another question that came up during the meeting last, the last planning board meeting was, there was seen some discrepancies in the architecture from the video we did last year, the video simulation compared to these photo analyses that we did, and we took a look at it, and we wanted to take you back to the video simulation just to answer that question, and if it's all right with the board, we'll start at the end of the video, which is at the Crotton Aqueduct, which I think is where the question was.
Yes.
And we're seeing, we're headed southbound on the Crotton Aqueduct here, looking over the wall at the proposed residences, and.
This was a year ago.
This was a year ago, right. This was the video.
Different than last month.
I'm sorry?[1780.37]
I said, "Different than last month."
Different than last month. We looked at the architecture, you're right, the architecture has evolved since then. This study was done as kind of a massing study and to arrive at a pervious coverage number for the MF District. And as such, over the last eight or nine months, the architecture has evolved and we've got Glenn Shaverney, the project architect here, to take you through that evolution of the architecture a little bit.
Good evening, Glenn Shaverney, Principal of GRCH Architecture. The plan that you saw last month was very similar in character to the new plan that we created for the walkout. We call them the walkout basement, south side elevations, which had a three-story elevation on that south side. We did... We carried that over into the rest of the community. So, yes, the rear elevations to the... From the original buildings to last month's buildings, which you see here up on the screen, did go through a new generation. The reason for this generation was the restrictive height that we encountered with the walkout. We still had to maintain a maximum 30-foot height ridge.
Just so the board's clear, where are the walkouts versus the first of yours?
The walkouts are on the south side of the... On the south side of the site, in the rear.
But is this, is what we're seeing here, a two-unit or a three-unit building? That's a three-unit building.
This is a three-unit building.
So that's now was actually on the south side?
Well, then, what we did was, then we created the non-walkout, latest generation of the elevations, specifically in the rear. That's what this building here looks like. So...
This is still...
This is the rear. This is the rear elevation. This is the front elevation. The prior one is the rear. That rear elevation, this is essentially the same as the walkout elevation you saw, except it has the basement level exposed. Okay?
What do you know about walkout and non-walkout?
Three stories.
So, can you go back to the site plan? Because I think we just need to make it clear. What am I referring to, the walkout? You just go outside.
I thought it was louder. I could pick it up, but... All right, so just so that we're clear, with the walkouts, what we're discussing, yeah, along the southern part.
No, that's all right, go ahead.
Can you see that?
Sort of. Yeah, go ahead.
This doesn't usually happen, I have to go down. But I'll go down. On the southern side, these are the walkout units because they've got the walkout basements. On the... Along the Croton Aqueduct, there are not walkout basements. Now, the issue that we were dealing with on the walkout side, on the southern side, is the height of the building is restricted because of the slope there. And so the design of the building was changed, and that's what Glenn is taking you through. That design was carried through on the entire project for consistency purposes. So when you're looking at the non-walkout units on the Croton Aqueduct side, you're also... It's got the same sort of roof line, et cetera.
So if you go back to the elevation, why don't we do this? Why don't you go back to the walkout one? Because everybody seems confused by it. Some people seem confused by that. So we call this the walkout because the ground slopes, the grade slopes from the front of the property to the rear, it's sloping down. So that slope towards the rear going down allows the basement level to be exposed above the ground. So we call that the walkout condition and that's what we presented last month when we were here.
But the unit you're showing us there is not gonna be built. Because, so, do you have a two... Do you have a two-unit building that's a walkout? Because that's what's gonna be built.
This was the one in the middle?
This is the two-unit walkout. All right, so why don't we stick with this one? So this is the two-unit walkout.
Facing south.
Huge.
Facing south. And it's... But the front is still a two-story because the grade slopes up towards the front and that's a two-story.
So the previous photo is what would be facing Station Road? That's what would be in the direction of Station Road? Okay.
And we did the visual studies to show that with the slope and the existing tree line from Station Road, that and the landscaping that we would be doing, the visuals were shown to be that you didn't see a whole lot from those visual studies. And that was a winter view. Now, as I drove here today, it would be impossible to see anything.
The aqueduct ones or the side ones?
So can you go to the aqueduct ones now with the rear? Okay. So if you just imagine the last elevation chopping off the basement view, raising the grade to the first floor height, that's the difference. For the entire rest of the site, we went from the south side, which the grade slopes down, to the rest of the site, which is relatively flat. Okay? So this affords us only a two-story rear, the same as the front. So we took the elevation that we created for the walkout and basically cut off the basement, exposed basement level, and carried that elevation in the rear throughout the rest of the site. So that was the reason for the difference in design look from the last year's elevation to this one.
My memory is crazy. What you showed last month did not have the architectural features of the chimneys and the roof line that this has. At least, I don't remember it.
Yeah, because I didn't carry anything since. I haven't done anything since. Now...
It looked like a barracks last month.
Really?
Yeah. Didn't have any chimneys.
Well, I'm sorry.
Unless I forgot looking... What I looked at.
No, that was the visual. Trees in front of it. Yeah, that, keep going.
Oh. Well, then you've seen less. You would've seen even less. That's all...
There's trees in the way there, yeah.
See, it is the same exact elevation, except with those gnarly trees.
The issue is, and it was discussed before, was that if you look at the bulk of that, what you're showing right now in your new post, it is significantly different than what you showed on the video. And if you go back to the video, you'll see that the roofs are much lower and the dormers are more exposed.
Do you have that elevation? This elevation we can use? Okay. So when this elevation was done a year ago, it was based on a two-story... Two-story building on grade with a maximum which had a 30 feet. We still have that opportunity to do that because what we did is we took the... We had to lower the pitches and lower everything for the walkout condition to maintain that 30-foot height. We're not bound by that on the rest of the site. So we're very happy. Our intentions are to even raise that ridge up on the rest of the buildings. And that affords us the ability to go much more back in this direction as far as much deeper gable roofs, reverse gables, and dormers, just like this. It's just that we took the walkout upper levels and put it throughout the rest of the site, but we still have a good amount of height left before we reach the 30-foot maximum where we could...
I don't think the 35-foot is, frankly, that's just the law.
I'm sorry, 35.
What the concern is, is that this is what you showed the Board of Trustees as they made their decision on the bulk that you were allowed. And what happens here is there is a certain breakdown of scale that's done here, that you presented, and the new iteration is much bulkier. So I think you have to figure out a way... We're not here to tell you to increase this height, but it is to change the scale of what you're doing currently to mimic more of what you presented a year or two ago to the Board of Trustees, who gave you this approval.
I think what we're looking for is to break up the just common level look and get more of these types of roofs and that creates some interest and some difference in the visual appearance of the buildings.
And as I just stated, because we have the 35 feet and we have not taken advantage of that in the latest iteration, we're able to do that. We are... These reverse gables with the balcony and the archtop windows, we still have the chimneys in already. That's not a problem for us to do that. We're happy to do that and I don't see any problem with us doing that. So in terms of the size and the bulk of the building, I don't think that's gonna be a big issue for us to do.
How much higher than the ridge line is the top of the chimney? And is there code that it has to be a certain height above?
It's just stay codes that has to be sort of high above. Two feet to 10 feet away.
They're still bound by the 35 feet. The chimneys, is that...
Yeah, I was just wondering, because in both this rendering and the other ones, it just looked like the chimneys were rather tall and massive compared... Especially the top part compared to the base of the chimney.
And that's not a problem. We're intending to lower them anyway.
Any other comments about the visual? No? I guess we can move on?
Certainly prefer what this looks like. I mean, you keep the south the way it is because the visual of that is far away, but this people walk right by here.
Okay, understood.
Anthony, did you want to pick up?
I have a question. Are you giving approval for this look?
Are we giving approval for this?
No.
I think this is all about a comment that was made last time that they were here.
That's what I saw.
That's all this is.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanna... Just wanna clarify.
The 35 height limit is also the height limit for chimneys, just I think it was a little unclear before. So there's no... You know, you can't go above that. So the chimney can't be higher than... No point of it can be higher than 35.
All right, well...
We're not there yet. This is just a comment.
I understand, yeah. We wanted to answer the question and take you through the evolution there. And I think this has been productive in terms of comments as to what people would want to see on this side. We do have Rich Pearson here to answer any questions about traffic. Yeah, unless you...
This was the last comment, it's not just specifically about this certain view. It was the scale and character of what you originally proposed as per how it's changing now, which would be for the whole place. Okay? So the scale and the character that you showed to the Board of Trustees is a far different look than what is being proposed right now. So I would at least would want to see that once you're finished with what you want you proposing as far as the scale of the bulk, that it then is kind of compared to this.
I think we're mixing a term this year, though, in terms of bulk, scale, and then architecture. Because, remember, the analysis that the village board was looking at was a request to change the... Let me just finish. Coverage and separation between buildings. That was a massing analysis. And so we understand that, yes, there was a layout that was presented and it's the genesis of this, what this is becoming. But to say to us, "Look, you know, you have to stick with that massing study," I think it is reversing the course of the evolution of how these buildings or the design is evolving from the architectural standpoint. We hear what you're saying in terms of... We hear what you're saying in terms of, "Look, we like the fact that there is a breakup of the visual and the massing of this building." And that is the purpose of this study, so we can then react to those comments and put it into the design. But in terms of what the village board was reviewing, it was most different than what this board is doing, in terms of what you're looking at from a...
Right, and we were looking at both, at mass, things like that. And I'm basing this on what was presented to the Board of Trustees and what they gave you as approval. So I'm using them as a guideline. So that's why I'm saying that I'm looking for you to follow this. But I'm doing it not because I want to do it, because I'm following what I believe the Board of Trustees was looking at.
Okay, I hear you. If any other questions about the design, which I'm happy to discuss it, or traffic, et cetera?
Yeah, I'm on the back track once more on the chimney thing, just so it's clear. No, the reason is the code's been really... The highest point of a building or structure includes without limitation chimneys, solar correctors, towers, blah, 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 except it doesn't include chimneys. There's an exception to that. Occupying no more than 5% of the roof area. So it's just written on...
In the town of East Hampton, you're allowed to have a furnace flue that goes above 35 feet, but a chimney flue, you can't.
Well, I don't want to say that on here you can have a chimney, but not a... Lucky there's small chimneys and not... Anyway, I just want to make the record to be right on that.
Any other comments from any of the boards? No, we haven't had that yet. No, we're gonna talk about that too. I think Rich Pearson is here too. We can talk about the parking, the site distance on South Broadway from the entrance to the site. And also, I had some questions too regarding level of service, the change of level of service, particularly on Station Road, which is... I think, Rich, why don't you just come up though? Maybe just run through the plans that you presented to us and just give us some background. Okay, maybe sit down?
First time I've ever lowered a mic to speak. Essentially, this is the plan that we had presented at the last meeting. It shows the site distance from the driveway up on the top. It's under existing conditions. And then down below, it's with potential proposed pavement markings to allow the driver exiting the driveway to get a little bit farther out away from the driveway and to be consistent with the Irvington Estates driveway. We have revised the traffic study and had a response letter addressing all the AKRF comments. We have not heard back or seen any comment memos from AKRF regarding their review, but we would continue to coordinate with them and your board regarding that as far as the number of parking spaces to be removed. We're suggesting that AKRF coordinate with your board and others at the village as desire to determine how many spaces you would like to have removed and that we would replace those spaces in the parking lot number seven by Field Point. And we included the graphics that we had at the last meeting for that. We're no longer proposing any parking in the vicinity of the park based on the action at the last meeting. That would be the modifications. So those can be adjusted based on the number of spaces actually removed from Broadway.
Well, in your professional opinion, what's the minimum number of spaces that have to be removed along South Broadway?
Well, as I mentioned last meeting, if you're... It depends on the criteria and how strictly you apply the criteria. So in this case, I believe it is six spaces, five or six spaces to have that where there is no restriction on that sightline, the red sightline in this area.
And that's both from either being stopped at the stop line or from advancing into the crosswalk?
Right, so this is... What's the factors or the consideration is 14 and a half feet back from the travel lane is the driver's eye. That's including the front of the vehicle not being at the edge of the travel lane. We used to do 12 feet back and in Connecticut, they would allow you to have 10 feet back where the driver's eye is relative to the travel lane. So 14 and a half feet that we've been using in the last, I guess, few, 10 years is more conservative than what I used for my previous 20-plus years. So as a comparison, what we mentioned at the last meeting as well to Irvington Estates driveway, they have essentially one parking space. If we were to remove one parking space, it would be consistent with the Irvington Estates driveway. So it's just something that the village, I think, would make a determination on what the village felt was appropriate is how we're staging this. If you go strictly by ASH, then it would be all the spaces except for one.
Isn't it like almost so more in a practical, what happens here is further down, that's when everyone goes from one lane to two and they whip around you to go through. All that's gonna happen is you get rid of those... All those spaces. It's just gonna make it happen earlier.
You're correct.
So to me, it's like... It's almost like the cars sort of help with that bottleneck. You only have one lane.
Right, essentially. Right, essentially, I just mentioned sort of traffic calming, driver expectancy. There have been no accidents at the driveway for the past five years. We submitted down accident data.
Did you ever do the one for Irvington Estates?
Yeah, and there's no accidents for five years, right. And it's similar, as I mentioned at the last meeting also. If you just look, you know, right outside the door here, and if you started to evaluate every intersection in the village to see if it might eschect criteria, as was discussed, you wouldn't have as much parking in the village. So it's a balance of the desire of the village for parking versus what you see there.
Well, I think if you take the spaces out of there, though, between Irvington Estates and your site, then you're going to stripe that entire area. You're not going to leave that as space, because that will channel people into the one lane. I think that makes them slow down a bit. I think, you know, Irvington Estates, you know, cars, I would figure, cars are going slower coming from Main Street to Irvington Estates than going from Irvington Estates farther down, because as George was saying, the road opens up there, and you're now you're away from the development, and there are fewer cars parked down there, so we'll speed up. But I think by keeping it in one lane, I think you force people to slow down a bit then, too. And I don't think they will go around so readily. I did have a question, though. You, I was reading through the traffic study, and you talked about the conditions after the development, and you mentioned, I think, level of service going down on Station Road from a C to a D, I think. And I want to know, what does that mean in terms of traffic, in terms of wait time? Because you have the tunnel behind you. And also, just for the board's clarification, too, you all know that there is the proposal to add parking spaces at Astor Book. More parking spaces means you're going to attract more traffic. So not only are you going to have a lower level of service D now at that location, but you're also encouraging more cars to use Station Road coming from the Astor Book site. And that, I don't think was taken into, I don't know if that was taken into account in your analysis, but that's my concern on.
I'm just going to...
You don't have to do it tonight, but I think you should go back and take a look. But I thought it said something that that was the one intersection where level of service was deteriorating as a result of the project. There are two instances. One was on Station Road, and I forget where the other one was. But those two, I'm more concerned about the Station Road one, because now you're going to start backing up traffic even longer there, and there are long wait lines. There's a long, and you're talking about changing the timing on the lights.
Right.
Right now, it's very long coming out of Station Road. There's a long light for Broadway, a long green cycle for Broadway. And it sounds like you wanted to make the green cycle longer on Broadway, which is going to delay traffic even more on Station Road.
The overall cycling, I believe we were going to keep the same, and we were just going to reallocate the green time. So as far as if you were arriving, just as a term red, it would be the same amount of time now with our recommended changes. So we're just kind of shifting around some of the traffic and not seeing the drop in delay initially that you were referring to.
Well, I'll go back and look for it, too, but...
We could find that. But another thing to mention is that when we did our study, we were very conservative. We didn't take any credit for pedestrians walking to the train station, to other restaurants and shops within the village, to walking to the schools, and as I've been out there doing some observing existing conditions, I saw many people at Irvington Estates that were walking, you know, from that property to the downtown area.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but I think that what I got out of the changes you were proposing were going to lower the level of service on Station Road. And that obviously is not because of the people coming out of your, necessarily coming out of your site. But you're making those changes, I think, to make it easier for people to get out of the site.
Not to make it easier for people to get out of the site. That was only for the operation of the intersection. We can put yourself in that more...
That's actually, maybe I missed it, but that's actually a good point about the having access down to the train from this property. You know, are there plans at all for having a pedestrian path?
Well, there's the Aqueduct Trail that's right in our backyard, so you can...
No, don't forget that, like, if you're going to go the train, you would go down the hill onto Station Road and through.
No, I would walk down South Broadway.
We have a path connecting to the Aqueduct from the side.
You could either walk from the back of the side onto the path.
On the back, upper right.
In the upper right-hand corner of the site.
Connecting to the Aqueduct.
Oh, I see, yeah, I get it, sure. All right, yeah, that makes more sense.
And that's perfect. I mean, that takes kids to Dallas Lane School, takes them to the Main Street School, takes them into town, it takes them down to the train.
Correct, we didn't take credit for that in our study. And again, compared to reoccupancy of the existing buildings with full occupancy of office and residential, we are showing, based on standard generation rates, that our project is a reduction as compared to a full reoccupancy of existing structures on the property.
Couple of other comments, staying with the traveling. How are we set up now in terms of the fire truck and access through the site for the fire truck?
Almost there.
Almost there. I think also, we've gained five or six parking spaces on the site visitor parking. I still think that it would seem to me for traffic flow through that site and to eliminate the potential for people parking on the street and blocking the street on the property, it might be better to make it one-way all the way through the site.
You did.
I'll make it circle.
Yeah, because you have it one-way just on the east side of the property right now.
Right.
And with the width of the road, and I think it also gives you the ability, then, people could just park along the side of the street at certain points then, too, and still have, still provide access for other vehicles to get around them and not have to be concerned about cars coming in the opposite direction. I think with the width of the street and the fact that the traffic will be rather slow through the site, too, it would just seem to me to make more sense to make this one-way all the way through the site.
Yeah, we saw that in Mr. Hahn's comment, although it was at the end of the day today. We don't have a problem with changing that to one-way circulation. Heard it a couple of times, and we'll make the change.
Okay. And one other comment I had, too, was I was concerned about the storm drain that's proposed to come through the Broadway buffer and then go east through the Broadway buffer and then head south down to Barney Brook.
Right, that's a...
Yeah, I think I want to see some details as to what the depth of the trenches that you need, what the width of the trench is, how close you're going to be to any of those trees that are in there, because there's some major trees there. I see one is already coming out because of that storm drain. So I want to see more closely and more detail as to what that trench is going to look like going through there. Because, you know, you're coming through the Broadway buffer, and the idea is to maintain that as best as possible, though, take out some of the underbrush, though, and to spruce it up. But I don't want to have the loss of any additional trees if we don't have to.
Yeah, we have a pipe going through there, and we'll take a closer look. We did override the trees that were shown on the survey. We stayed as far as we could and tried to go down the middle of them, but we can take a better look and make sure, maybe there's a tree that's in poor shape that we just want to go through and avoid, stay further from other trees. We'll take a close look at that.
I think at some point, it would be good if you'd stake it out.
Yeah.
And then we could take a walk up there, like, to see how they lay out. Might even be good to have Lucille Muntz come on that walk, too.
Sure, and we still need to respond to some of her comments as well.
Further on that storm drain, more likely it's going to be a turn, at least one turn. Show where the manholes are. You're going to have manholes, I presume.
Oh, yeah, there'll be manholes at every change in direction for the pipes.
Right, it should be. And we don't want them two feet in the air.
Oh, no.
They'll be flush.
Right.
Yeah, were you going to raise about the no left turn?
I don't know. I don't know what the answer is there. I was asking Ed about this, Ed Maron. On Sycamore Lane, when you come down to Broadway, there is a no-left turn sign there now. And I was asking Ed, because, you know, I've lived in the village since the '70s, and I don't recall when that no-left turn sign went up, and what was the motivation for that no-left turn? I mean, that driveway, their drive, I'm sorry, Sycamore Lane is almost directly opposite the Irvington Estates, so that could be part of the issue, too. I was just wondering, what is the traffic count coming out of Sycamore Lane at peak hour compared to your peak hour? And if it's close, should we be looking at possibly a no-left turn coming out during, at least during peak hour?
Out of our property.
Right, right. Because, you know, you have to come across, you, we have the site distance to begin with, and then also during, particularly during evening rush hour, and I think probably during morning rush hour, South Broadway backs up to the co-ops on the east side of Broadway. So people who are trying to get out of your driveway and trying to make a left onto South Broadway are going to be running into traffic, particularly during peak hour. So I think that's something that, I don't know, do you have counts in there, Rich, for Sycamore Lane?
I do.
And I think it would be good to see how they compare to the counts of your peak hour.
Yeah, on the continuum project at that site, the initial traffic studies didn't show a backup, show much of a backup on Broadway. So I had our traffic person come in at around, I think it was around 4:00 or something, a time of day where I had observed that it was very badly backed up. And he came out and in fact, found out that in fact it was. And the mitigation they proposed was no left, I don't remember the exact hours, but no left turn out of this site during particular hours.
It's a school, it's a school.
I think that was, yeah, I think it was around the school times.
Because I know, if I come out of Station Road around 7:30, quarter to 8:00, it starts backing up.
Yeah, it's not at all times, and I don't think it necessarily peaked with the peak time. It was at an odd time that it did have that bad backup. And neither traffic expert had seen that, but then I insisted that they go back at a certain time of day. But anyway, I think it's probably worth looking back at that and what hours, you know, they thought were. And I'll, you know what, I'll ask, I'm going to have to ask AKRF about, to weigh in specifically about the number of parking spaces, like, what's the fewest parking spaces you could eliminate and keep it safe? And then I'll also ask them to look at that in particular and, you know, consider that as mitigation.
As highly scientific as I can get, being that I took both of my kids to the high school at that particular time, is it's actually a benefit when their cars are backed up, because when there were cars coming out of the other place or on Sycamore, the lightness had to happen. Well, no, you would wait until someone said, yes, you can come and go through. Whereas if it's, if there isn't that backup, it's more of like, good luck, you know? So, highly scientific.
Did you want to comment?
Sure, just generally, the Sycamore Lane volumes are substantially higher than the volumes we're talking about with our site driveway. There is a second access where Sycamore intersects Harriman Road, so that's their alternative, where we would not have an alternative for our site being a single-side access driveway. I suspect there might be some vehicles, if you want to call them cut-through traffic, using Sycamore to avoid the light at Harriman and Broadway, at Station Road. Also, for the residents of our development, in time, they will be aware of the peaks, and they'll know about alternate routes that they could take during those peak times or plan their trips. And I also observed the school traffic and drove up the school driveway during the peak times in the morning and talked to the people there and confirmed it was a regular basis. And so it's just, it's a surge in school traffic and many people getting driven to school these days. Again, with our development, it's within walking distance of the school, so it's a plus for our development.
Pat, I don't believe there's a left-hand turn restriction at the existing co-op.
No, there isn't. It's just for Sycamore Lane.
Downingwood has a no-left turn also.
They do, too, yeah. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Just a comment, the no-left turn at Downingwood, they just go the other way and go and touch the light down in court.
That's true, but still no left turn.
But they go to the light, they can make a left turn. And on Sycamore Lane, it's being used a lot more now because people are using it as a shortcut so they don't have to deal with the traffic on Harriman.
Stop signs, right.
And they still make a left turn. It doesn't matter whether the sign is there or not.
Well, they make a left, they're able to make a left turn onto Sycamore, but they're not allowed to make a left turn from Sycamore.
Right. They're not supposed to.
Any other comments from the board members? No? Any comments from AJ, yes?
MJ.
MJ. AJ.
MJ, ECB. One of the things we were wondering about is, we appreciate the fact that there was a five-year study done about any accidents at that location, but how active has that property been in the past five years? Because as I understand it, they had shut down, they've been gradually decreasing the population there for a while, so...
Well, it hasn't been very active, but that's why they were asked to look at the traffic data all the way from Station Road and Harriman Road along South Broadway, all the way up to Main Street, and see what was the incident, incidences of accidents in that entire stretch, not just at their driveway.
Okay. And also, just, I also agree with the idea that channeling people to Station, channeling more pedestrians to Station Road is not a great idea. The Aqueduct to Main Street is a recommended one.
Unless we get a sidewalk on Station Road.
There are sidewalks sometimes, and people don't use them.
True, but I mean, there's no sidewalk from Station Road and South Broadway until you get almost to, I guess, Woodbarn. Any other? Yes.
Yes, thanks. Mark Gilliland, I just wanted to mention something, which I think is very important. I think George had it correct in terms of the trustees looking at massing. We were influenced definitely by the original modeling, specifically because when you have those kinds of gables and roof lines and articulations, you don't have the same kind of blocking of the mass. It's not as Beric-like, I think was the word used today for some of the redesigns. So I just wanted to concur that the board at that time was definitely influenced by the sense of the variation in the roof lines creating a much different sense of mass to the, to each building.
Yeah, I think that's what we were getting at, too. Yes, I agree. Okay. Any other comments from the public? No?
Actually...
Yes.
MJ Wilson, ECB. We also concur with Lucille Muntz's report regarding trees and what she recommends. It still needs to be done. And we did repeat our comments that we are concerned about the large scale, the large amount of tree loss. And we also just wanted to emphasize the fact that the trees that have been there, they're mature trees, and they've developed a mature ecosystem, small as it is, which supports a lot more wildlife than most people recognize. And with the removal of the trees and the replanting, that is going to be lost. So we just want to go in the record to state that that's a concern.
Okay, thank you.
There's sort of an irony with our list, is that, you know, I remember several applicants wanted to have a pool, and we went through all these hoops about keeping a tree because of whatever. And on this property, there are many heritage trees completely being eliminated. And this has never been part of any process at all from day one. So the way this has been done, it's just like they're going. I'm just commenting about the process. So, I mean, I don't see how one, like, when Continuum was here, we demanded that they keep, there were a couple of heritage trees, and they changed their plans around that. I don't see how one can do that with the allotment of space that they've been given.
Any other comments? I think the meeting will be adjourned.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, it didn't seem to move that fast in years. Just that if we could schedule the public hearing for the next meetings, that we can get the notices out and start the process.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Yes, we'll do that.
What did David ask you?
July 5th, 6th.
Six.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.